Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Campas.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pekow. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the June 5th, 2023 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting of June 5th, 2023?
Second.
Any changes or amendments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Economic Development Advisory Board Appointments.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to advise and consent the appointment of Joe Lorachella to the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Second.
Would Joe happen to be here?
No.
We'll welcome him on board. Could you call the roll, please?
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Accounts payable approval through June 19th, 2023 approval.
Madam Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from June 6th, 2023 through June 19th, 2023, in amount of $6,260,341.24.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda. Payroll, A, payroll for June 9th, 2023 approval. B, amend Chapter or Title VII, Chapter IV, number of Class A liquor license ordinance. C, memorandum of understanding, right to view visual image data, cooperative agreement between the Village of Orland Park, Orland Joint Emergency Telephone System Board, and Orland LP, who own and operate Orland Square Shopping Center. D, reciprocal reporting system agreement between the Orland Park Police Department and Board of Education, School District 230 Agreement. E, Schusler Park Inclusive Play Structure Design. F, CPAC Pool Chemicals, Bulk Sodium Hydrochloride and Hydrochloric Acid. G, CPAC Lazy River Pool Cocking Emergency Repairs. H, sanitary sewer rehabilitation and construction oversight. I, Tyler Technologies, Inc., Computer-Aided Dispatch and Record System, Annual Maintenance Fee Purchase. J, Contract Cancellation, Vehicle Licensing Software System and Fulfillment Services for 2023 through 2025 Vehicle Sticker Cycle. K, Resolution Approving SPUR II Water Main Temporary Construction and Permanent Utility Easements.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
I move to approve items A through K of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments on those? Please call the roll.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Intergovernmental Agreement between Consolidated High School District 230 and the Village of Orland Park for the services of an Orland Park Police Department School Resource Officer at Carl Sandberg High School, recommended agreement.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Orland Park and School District 230 for a school resource officer at Carl Sandberg High School and authorize the village manager or his designee to execute the agreement, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this?
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
I'd just like to, you know, reiterate, I know we've mentioned it a couple of times in past boards, and I know we have a representative of 230 here, and at least unofficially. This is an outstanding program, and I'd just like to say a personal thank you to Officer Chuck Kirby, who does such a great job at Carl Sandberg High School. And honestly, I look forward to working with 135, and I hope that they'll come around on SROs for the junior highs, at the very least, if not more in the future. So, thank you.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Reardon.
With two students at Carl Sandberg, I couldn't agree with you more, Trustee Healy, and they're great with the kids. It, I think it instills a lot of cooperation and, you know, discussion with police officers opposed to being afraid of them, or, you know, trying to get away from them. You build a good relationship with them, and it's been a great program. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. STP Phase 1 Engineering, 143rd Street, 131st Street, and Orland Parkway Proposals.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve the proposals from V3 Companies of Woodridge, Illinois, for the STP Phase 1 Engineering for an amount not to exceed $25,832 for 131st Street, $32,940 for 143rd Street, and $31,408 for Orland Parkway, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? Rashid, did you want to say anything on this? No, okay. You can call the roll, please.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Class A Kenworth T480 chassis and plow dump body purchase.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the purchase of two single-axle Kenworth T480s with Henderson Marquee Dump Bodies for an amount of $439,154 per Henderson Products, Inc., quote, number 171942, and approve the use of Sourcewell Contract Number 080818-HPI for the purchase of two Henderson Snow and Ice Control Equipment Packages and FSHV Box Spreaders installed for an amount of $128,704 per Henderson Products, Inc., quote, number 159889, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Orland Junior High and High Point Elementary Expansions.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
I move to approve the Committee of the Whole recommended action as presented in the staff report regarding case number 2022-1018, also known as Orland Junior High and High Point Elementary Expansions, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Granting a Special Use Orland Junior High and High Point Elementary Schools, 14825 and 14855, West Avenue.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Liberty School Expansion.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Reardon.
Move to approve the Committee of the Whole recommended action as presented in the staff report to the Board of Trustees regarding case number 2022-1019, also known as Liberty Intermediate School Expansion, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Granting a Special Use Liberty School, 8801, 151st Street.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Centennial School Expansion.
Madam Chairman.
Trustee Reardon.
Move to approve the Committee of the Whole recommended action as presented in the staff report regarding case number 2022-1020, also known as Centennial School Expansion, and move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Rezoning and Consolidating Certain Property and Granting a Special Use Centennial School, I guess, permit for 14101 Creek Crossing Lane.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Joe RZA-Acura, 8760 West 159th Street, New Dealership.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
Move to approve the Plant Commission Recommended Action for Case 2022-Joe083, also known as Joe RZA-Acura, as presented in the staff report for this case, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Granting an amended special use for a planned development and special use permit with modifications for motor vehicle sales and rental, RZA-Acura, 8760 West 159th Street.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Waterford Point, 11015 West 153rd Street, Sidewalk Variance.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the requested variance from the developer for no sidewalk to be put in on the east side of Wolf Road.
Second.
Madam Chairman, there was some confusion about this issue at the Committee of the Whole meeting, so let me try and clarify it. At the Planning Commission, the variance was denied by the Planning Commission, and the motion on the floor is to overturn that decision, which would require, under the municipal code, two-thirds of all trustees of the village, which means, in order to pass, you will need four votes in the affirmative. So, the vote goes like this: If you vote yes, it means you are allowing the petitioner not to put in the sidewalk that's being, that's required. If you vote no, then you are requiring him to put in the sidewalk. The mayor, in this case, because of the Planning Commission's decision and the motion as it's, as it's stated to overturn that decision, the mayor's vote wouldn't count, even if he was present. It takes four trustees in the affirmative to overturn that. So, the answer is, the position is, if you want the sidewalk, you vote no. If you don't want, if you approve the variance for no sidewalk, vote yes.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments? Trustee Malani.
A vote, a vote yes means that you're going to approve the variance, and there will be no sidewalk. A vote of no means that you're going to require the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Is everyone clear? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Reardon.
Yes.
Trustee Healy.
Yes.
Trustee Malani.
No.
Trustee Campas.
No.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Yes.
That motion fails. The variance is not granted.
Ordinance Amending Title III, Chapter I, Section V of the Village Code, Recreational Activities.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter I, Section V of the Orland Park Village Code regarding recreational activities.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
I promise this will be short. Quick question for staff: So, item two, should we consider "except where permitted by signage" instead here? So, I think if I was to go back and look at section two of this, we have language about, let me pull it up. So, item two is changing the language to launch any boat, raft, or other watercraft of any kind and from village property into any pond or lake, except on Lake Sedgwick at Centennial Park, or when the launching is part of a regularly scheduled program of the village. So, I guess my question is, we're very specific here about Lake Sedgwick, I'm not sure why. I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but I'm just wondering if we should just maybe make it "by signage" to allow that there instead.
That's a very good point, Trustee Campas, so we could probably just, we can just say "except when the launching is part of a regularly scheduled program of the village."
Okay, in which case, then, I move to amend the language of item two to take out the portion about Lake Sedgwick and say "except when launching is part of a regularly scheduled program of the village."
Second. For discussion.
Any discussion on that?
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Malani.
So, my guess is, the reason that Lake Sedgwick at Centennial Park is specified because that's currently the only place we allow it? That's correct. Okay, so I- But, you know, who knows, right? There could be a canoe class in one of the other lakes. Okay. But, but if we're narrowing where we allow it, why would we take that out? I think by taking out the Lake Sedgwick, we're not narrowing it. So, we're saying if there's a, if there's a program that's, if there's a regularly scheduled program in some other body of water, then it's allowed. Right, but is, so I guess my question is, is there a reason we're only specifying Lake Sedgwick? Has that been the only place we've ever done anything on a body of water in Orland Park?
It is.
And it probably is the, my guess, the safest place to do it, and it's a central location?
We purposely tried to keep boats out of other bodies of water in Orland Park. It doesn't mean in the future that wouldn't change, but currently, that's the only place where we, we want that to happen.
Right.
It's regulated there by IDNR, or the Department of Natural Resources, so.
And if we did go into another body of water, this body, the village board, would approve it as part of our regular programming approvals.
Trustee Radiszewski, did you want to say something?
Well, I think, I think because we, we allot, we have a regular program that allows for kayaks and such on Lake Sedgwick, that that is just, that's just part of a program. But we also allow people to rent them, we allow them to put their own boats in as well.
No, no, the intent of the, of the change is that we're just trying to keep it on Lake Sedgwick only, or as a part of regular program. So, again, there's, you know, there's a pond behind Village Hall, there's one behind Wrecked Men, so, you know, the purpose is to clean this up and just to say that those, that Lake Sedgwick is permitted, but not anywhere else, unless it's part of a program.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Malani.
So, so to Bray's point, then, why would we take out the specificity? Just leave it in there, and that way, we narrow it down to only people can put stuff in at Lake Sedgwick and nowhere else, until we decide to change it.
So, Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
So, in that case, I would say, let's vote on the amendment I just made, or the motion I just made, but I guess my, my point was, let's control it by signage. My concern with the code is that when we start injecting things with that much specificity, then times change, and then we're back here making another change, and I just wanted to offer more, that's why I initially offered the idea of a signage control, so that it would offer the village the flexibility that it needs, but at the same time, does not have to require a change in the future.
Trustee Campas, did you withdraw your motion?
Is that an option?
It is.
I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw the second.
I withdraw the second.
The original motion is pending. Could, any more comments or questions?
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
So, a couple more things, they're, they're all minor. So, on item four, the original language proposed has got a list, be both before and after the action, which the language just proposed is operate a snowmobile, golf cart, or any other type of motorized vehicle, including, and here goes another list, but not limited to mini bikes, go karts, motorcycles, dirt bikes, ATVs, and Class 3 e-bikes. I think just to clarify the language, I like, my suggestion would be, and I move to change this to operating any type of motorized vehicle, including, but not limited to, snowmobiles, golf cart, mini bikes, go karts, motorcycles, dirt bikes, ATVs, and Class 3 e-bikes.
Is there a second? Motion fails. Original motion on the floor, any other questions or comments? Call the roll on the original motion.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Amendment Number Two.
Madam Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve expenditure increases in the Insurance Fund and General Fund in a total amount of $265,756. Expenditure decreases in the General Fund in the amount of $54,742, as detailed on fiscal year 2023 Budget Amendment Number Two.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Temporary Finance Manager, Staffing Services As Needed.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Reardon.
Move to approve the employee leasing agreement for temporary staffing services with GovTemp USA LLC for an interim finance manager services at a rate of $105 per hour through December 31st, 2023, and approve and authorize village manager to execute said agreement, subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21 Prohibition of Cannabis Business Establishments of Title VII Business and License of the Orland Park Village Code.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Campas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 Prohibition of Cannabis Business Establishments of Title VII Business and License of the Orland Park Village Code.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Campas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pro Tem Katsinas.
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors.
Frank Gabriel, we're calling them in no specific order, I just want to remind everyone, it's three minutes to speak. I will give you a 30-second warning when you get to 2:30. So, you can start when you are ready, sir.
Hi, my name is Frank Gabriel, I am a Maintenance Two in the Building Maintenance Division of Public Works. We just all came out to talk about a couple topics that we've had some issues with. So, we've tried going through different chains of commands, and we just haven't got where we wanted to go, so we thought you guys and the public are the next best option. My topic I just want to talk about is staffing. Being in building maintenance, I'm also the Secretary of our union, so I'm talking to all of the union members a lot, and then just being in building maintenance, I am in all the village buildings, talking to all the departments all the time, and just talking, I know just amongst the Public Works employees and just overall village staff, said all departments, and said I talked to all different levels of people, from managerial level all the way down to the people on the ground, and just overall, they said around everybody morale, just for all village employees, is rather low. Also, I'm talking to some employees around, people have said they've had issues with staffing in some of their departments, that they were just taking on way more work than they, their department could handle. I don't have any hard evidence to back that up, per se, but I want to cite back to a board meeting on April 3rd, there was an Assistant Director and a Director of their respective departments cited the same thing, that they had bad turnover issues and were spending too much of their operation time just training. Public Works alone, this past winter, we lost seven non-retiree employees, younger employees who just left due to the overall culture of what was going on. I want to pull up, said Indeed is a top, I don't have exact numbers, but it's a top three job site used in the United States. The overall rating for the village for well-being of an employee was below average on there, it received a grade of 67. And it seems like about all the reviews of the village itself, moving past 2020, were just very negative. I would just like to read one of those reviews, this is from the end of September of 2022. It's a one-star review, it says toxic, toxic, toxics. If you like coming to work and being berated and bullied by staff, this job is for you. You will be given more work than you could handle, and management is insufficient and never available. Many employees stay for a short time, and understaffing is chronic, benefits are subpar, employee policies are vague and constantly changing. I don't know if I personally agree-
Excuse me, 30 seconds.
I don't know if I personally agree with all of how that's written, but it said, those are just the reviews of what working for the village is online. For the past about two years, about all the reviews are somewhat similar to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Tim Lynch.
Hi, my name is Tim Lynch, I'm a long-term resident and been a village employee for 21 years, I'm the electrician and down at Public Works. I don't know if you're aware of the harassment that's been going on towards union officials over the last, I would say, year, maybe a little bit longer? Are you aware that there's been union officials written up for insubordination, ex-union officials being written up and told that they're going to be fired for insubordination, bullying, coercion, all false, made-up accusations with no backing? Now, we do have... So, on the day that I was accused of coercion, bullying, and several other things, we have an Assistant Director at Public Works who texted one of the guys, "I hear you regret coming to work here, I'm sorry you feel that way, and sorry for doing that to you. We are trying to stop the nonsense from a select few right now, hanging their brighter days ahead." Now, when we asked for the information for why I was being contemplating termination of 21 years here, never been written up, never had a verbal warning, always been an outstanding employee, 17 years as union president, I had stepped down at the time, and I was done with being involved with the union. Here is the last statement, there's one email sent out on this date, same date that brought, that the Assistant Director said he was going to handle a couple problems. The President of the Union was written up for insubordination, I was the ex-President of the Union at the time. This is from a foreman to the Assistant Director, "Tim keeps bringing up working together amongst the departments and with management to have a better work life. These conversations are causing division now more than ever, it's got to stop." So, I don't see how me saying that we have to work together as a team is a bad thing for the residents of Orland Park, I don't see how it's a bad thing for you, I don't see how it's a bad thing for management, but there has been several, every time something happens where the union has to get involved and just say, hey, you know, you can't do this, or can we talk about this?
Excuse me, 30 seconds.
Last thing I'll talk about is uniforms. Are you, I think there was a new uniform policy or something that was tried to put in by the director of Public Works. We also have his first draft on his policy. And then we have your lawyers' comments that, I don't know if I'll have the time here to go into great detail, but basically it says...
Time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Kenneth Brown.
Good evening. I'm Kenneth Brown, a Maintenance Worker One in the Parks and Rock Department. Wanted to talk about the shift change in the snow. As Frankie said, seven younger employees had to leave the village. And that hurts our customer service to all the residents. There was an email from the village manager saying that if we dropped all of our grievances, that we would not be put on nights. Those grievances had nothing to do with snow. There was also from notes that were on a Public Works computer from the director, saying that we're going to lose people. It's going to be harder, but it all seems to just be okay with it. I personally, I had to go on the night shift and work 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. when we're normally working 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I have an eight-year-old daughter. Her mother also works nights. She had to be raised by her grandparents and babysitters for the four months. It's been done years without this night shift. It's destroying families. My daughter cried countless nights. I mean, why do you think these people left? It's a toxic environment. They tried to suspend me because I had a flat tire. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Robert Pinkinen. I'm sorry if I said your name wrong.
Good evening, Board. I just want to talk about ethics for a little bit, which you guys have all understood. I guess, I don't know how long exactly it was where the ethic policy ordinance for village employees and village officials got remodified and passed by everybody up front. There was our assistant director at Public Works. He actually interviewed a person at Jimmy John's sandwich shop and hired him on the spot. As far as I know and I'm aware of, as you are, there is a different hiring process, interview process than what was happening. That person also received a text on November 18th at 12:40 p.m., quote, "We are trying to stop the nonsense from a select few hanging there." A few days later, he was terminated. Brian Fyde, the assistant director of Public Works, speaking of ethics, I was asked to go to his house on village time, look at an irrigation issue, and also fix it. And I was also there with another village employee who also works at Public Works. There has been several, I know for sure, two management people from Public Works Department who have had their vehicles, personal vehicles, inside the garage area stalls, being worked on by your mechanics who are on the clock on village time. Last time I checked, that's not allowed. And not only that, for insurance reasons also. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Jamie Davies.
Hi, my name is Jamie Davies, a long-term resident, probably over 25 years. I was told when I was a little kid, working for the village, or any village, is a great job to have. I thought I had that privilege about two years ago, finally getting a job here, having fun. The culture was good, meeting a lot of the guys and women also that worked here. And then seeing management completely break down the culture with being overworked, putting us in unsafe situations. An example of that is last year when we had our, I believe it was a 24-hour, 36-hour snowstorm. We said, hey, we can have coverage, 24-hour coverage or however long you need, two shifts of, you know, 12 hours. They said, no, we're putting you on 16s, and then you're going to go home for eight, and then come back for another 16. I don't know how many of you have been in a plow truck for 16 hours, 12 hours, 10 hours, and then trying to go home when you have kids or a family and trying to get sleep, you're not going to get proper sleep and then have to come back for another 16-hour shift. There was people that were falling asleep that put us in danger, that put the public in danger. But our upper management thought it was a great idea to do that. So there's just been breakdowns in communication. It has showed that our upper management does not care about us, that they come up with plans that either they completely don't know about, they don't have the experience, which they say they do, but clearly they don't if they're putting people in danger. And I thought I was going to retire here, but I had to leave early, along with two other people that I got hired on with. They're also gone. And another worker that was brought here from another Public Works and had experience, he was probably one of the best operators, and upper management would not give him what he was supposed to be paid. He didn't even ask for a raise or anything like that, what he was supposed to be paid as a Maintenance Two worker. And they basically told him, you know, go about your way, and he also left. So upper management does not care anything about us. And that's a fact. And when we've tried to work with them and have these meetings and do all these things with them, try to communicate, you know, and in retrospect, or not retrospect, but they just basically give you the bird in a silent way. But other times, they will make it very apparent that they don't care. And anyone that has any type of job, I don't care who it is, all you want is a little respect, maybe a little pat on the back like, thanks.
30 seconds.
Hey, good job. And we don't get that here. And they just leave us to the wolves. I wish I could have stayed 100%. I wish I could have worked for all of you till I retired. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kevin Arnold.
Hello, my name is Kevin Arnold. I've worked for the village for 22 and a half years, plus as a seasonal in Parks Department for six seasons. I hear outrageous rumors around Public Works about management and think it's exaggerated information. But when someone shows me facts on paper and events that are authenticated from multiple witnesses, I can't believe the indecency of management towards their employees, who are the ones that make management look good. In closing, I work for the War Department and morale is at the lowest I've ever seen since I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Georgie Stednikah. Not even close. It's hard to read. I'm sorry.
I'm just going to read. So I stand here as a dedicated employee. I'm here to address you for some pressing concerns within the organization, the lack of accountability amongst some of the management team, instances of retaliation, and inappropriate jokes. These are all issues that have the potential to undermine our success and must be addressed. To begin, the lack of accountability amongst some of our management team is an obstacle that we cannot afford to ignore. When leaders fail to take responsibility for their actions and decisions, it creates a culture of mistrust and undermines the foundation of a healthy work environment. Without accountability, our workforce feels disempowered, demotivated, and disconnected from our organization's vision, which leads us to a disservice to our residents. Furthermore, instances of retaliation has been observed and documented within our organization. Employees who had the courage to raise concerns or report grievances are facing adverse consequences as a result. Retaliation hinders open communication. This in turn discourages employees from speaking up. It is the responsibility of organizations to ensure that employees feel safe and protected when they come forward with their concerns. Another disheartening issue is inappropriate jokes and banter from some of the management's team. It is essential that we recognize that inappropriate comments, offensive jokes, or any behavior that demeans or belittles others has no place in the organization. Such actions not only create discomfort and distress, but also contribute to a toxic work environment. Employees deserve a professional and respectful atmosphere where they can thrive and be productive. Addressing the inappropriate jokes and banter requires a zero policy. We should be emphasizing the importance of respectful and inclusive behavior. The consequences of these issues is evident in poor morale among employees. To address these challenges, we must take immediate action. We need to establish clear guidelines and policies regarding the accountability of all the levels of management. It is crucial to set expectations for behavior, hold managers accountable for their actions, and provide channels for employees to report misconduct without fear of retaliation. These are crucial steps towards fast fostering an environment of trust and transparency. In conclusion, the lack of accountability, instances of retaliation, and inappropriate jokes from some management should be addressed without delay. By establishing clear guidelines, implementing anti-retaliation measures, and promoting respectful behavior, we can create a thriving work environment where employees feel valued, empowered, and motivated to contribute their best while achieving a good life, good work-life balance. Thank you.
Board comments.
Trustee Malani.
Point of order. Do we have any other non-scheduled?
Pardon?
We didn't ask if there's any other non-scheduled citizens to speak.
Any non-scheduled citizens to speak? Anyone who hasn't spoke that wishes to. Board comments. Trustee Malani.
I'd like to thank everybody that attended our June 10 concert at Centennial Park West. I guess we had about 2,400 people there. Great turnout for a great night out, and we appreciate everybody for coming. We also had a good turnout of over 600 people at the Market in the Park on June 8th as well. So the weather held out for us, and, you know, we had a great event there. I also wanted to share, you know, the Orland Park Owls have been hard at work again. They earned 34 medals competing in the Special Olympics Illinois Summer Games on June 9th through June 11th. They competed in bocce ball, swimming, track and field, powerlifting. They earned 19 gold medals out of those 34, 13 silver and two bronze medals. So, you know, once again, we're always proud of the Owls and the feats that they accomplish. And most importantly, our staff and everyone that works with the Special Recreation Department. So we thank you for that as well.
Thank you. Trustee Radiszewski. Just again, trustee Radiszewski, you are not physically here due to an injury, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Reardon.
Thank you. I want to reiterate, I was at the Market in the Park and it was fantastic. We had great weather. The band was fantastic. I want to thank our sponsors for both that and Summerfest and the concerts. We couldn't put those on without them. So that was, that was great. The concert was fantastic. I live in that neighborhood. I know that was up for a lot of discussion. We're talking about Centennial West, to be able to walk there and walk home. It was fantastic. It was not overbearing on the neighborhood or anything. Special, you know, shout out to the Recs Department. Both events were fantastic, well-run, and a lot of people around for information. Summerfest, by all accounts, went very smoothly as well. So a lot of good things. The next one is July 15th. It'll be in the parking lot this time because the construction will start on Centennial West. But I think it'll be just as, you know, just as exciting and easy to get to and plenty of parking over there. One thing about our codes, I think I just need to make a comment that, you know, codes are there for a reason and they are useful, but that doesn't necessarily mean we have to follow exactly the letter of the code every time. I think there are situations where we need to rethink that. And I think we want to be business-friendly to contractors. And I think we need to really look at why some of our codes are in place in the first place and if they're accomplishing the goal. So that's all.
Trustee Healy.
Madam Mayor, I have two comments tonight. Thank you, Sean. Two comments tonight, Madam Mayor. The first one is that last week we were found, our lawsuit with the former village trustee was found baseless. And that was the first time I was ever sued in my life. And so it was good. I knew I had, you know, that the allegations were baseless, but it's nice having it reaffirmed in the court.
I think you mean the village manager?
Trustee. You said trustee.
Oh, I'm sorry, village manager. And so, anyway, that was a, that was a good thing. The second thing is that just reflecting today and everything like that, just that, you know, I looked up some things about Thomas Humphrey, one of the mayor's, our founder or whatever, younger brother. He died in the Civil War. And he died in a battle at the Warebottom Church on May 20th, 1864. And that church is just south of Richmond. And it's just looking at that, this Civil War, there were 618,000 people died in that war, Americans. 58,000, you know, less than 10% died in Vietnam. Illinois had 31,000 die in the Civil War, and 10% of that died in Vietnam. So this was just a traumatic thing, the Civil War. And my point being is that not enough has been accorded to those who fought for the idea of freedom back in that Civil War. And I think more, they deserve a better, a better honor in our society. Thanks.
Trustee Compass.
So just like to wish Happy Father's Day to everyone that shares that most wonderful title of dad. I know it's one of my personal favorites, the absolute top favorite. I'd also like to congratulate the Orland Park Chamber of Commerce on a successful inaugural Summerfest. But most especially, I'd like to thank the police chief, D.C. West, Commander Lee, and all the women and men of the Orland Park Police Department for putting in the extra hours, not only during the event, but all the planning, right? We know what happened to our neighbors to the south. I think we had a very significant presence. Thankfully, we had no major issues. So thank you to all the women and men of the department for keeping our residents and guests secure. Market in the Park, as we've heard, will continue with its third in the series on Thursday. And then on Sunday, the 25th, I don't think anyone's mentioned this, but if I, if they have, I apologize for the redundancy. Crescent Park will be the first of the concerts in the park series. Playing then will be the Fortunate Sons, the Creedence Clearwater Revival Tribute Band, starting at 6:00 p.m. Both the Market in the Park and the concert in the park are free events. And then lastly, just a quick reminder, we're not meeting here on July 3rd due to the holiday. So I'd just like to wish everybody a very early, happy 4th of July. It's a day that we celebrate our freedom, secured for us by soldiers willing to place their lives on the line against what was then overwhelming odds. Many of them did not think that they would win. So to all of our active military and veterans across the globe that keep our liberty secure today, thank you. That's it for me.
I get to sit in this big seat tonight, so I also get to share thoughts from the person that should be sitting in this seat tonight. So he apologizes for missing tonight's meeting. He's visiting his new granddaughter, Olivia Rae Peacock. He is aware of how well Summerfest went. The cooperation between the village and the Chamber of Commerce was a critical part of the success. He wants to thank Chief Rossi, Deputy Chief West, our command staff for the preparations of an outstanding plan, and all of our officers and staff for executing the plan to keep our residents, businesses, and our visitors safe during the event. I also want to thank them for keeping us safe all the time. I have said it many times, we have by far the best police department in the state, thanks to the men and women who lead and serve on it. The chief and I agree, we will not allow the riffraff that are destroying Chicago come and try to destroy our suburbs and stop our businesses from thriving, stop Orland from hosting and events. We will continue to keep Orland Park a great place to live, work, and play for our visitors and residents. Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, penninglet
I move to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent, C, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific village employees.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Katsinas.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.